It's about time to call the meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission for the City of Huntsville, July 22, 2014. And I welcome all of you who are here, both the Planning Commission, the city employees who are here to help us keep it straight, and the people who have come to make public comment, as well as the engineers and developers, et cetera, who have come to give us more information when we need it. I'd like to say that we have some sadness tonight to address. One of our members is moving from the City of Huntsville, and I'd like to ask Sharon Tyson if she'd come over. We have a little remembrance to give you. Sharon has been on the Planning Commission for three years, and she's been a very valuable member of the Planning Commission, as well as a valuable community volunteer, and we're certainly going to miss you, Sharon. And you've been a wonderful friend to many people in Huntsville, and I know I'm not the only one sad to see you go, and you're welcome to come back and visit any time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, for your service.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission is divided into two committees, the subdivision committee and the zoning committee, and those committees meet once a month prior to the meeting. We discuss each of the items that you'll see on the agenda tonight. Each of those items gets discussed in the individual committees, and they will have come forth with a recommendation tonight. After we have the public hearings, we'll hear the committee's recommendations on those particular items. So if we move along fast, it's because we have seen a lot of these issues before and discussed them at length. If you're here to comment on any of the agenda items, you certainly may have new information that we haven't heard or thought of, and we're very interested in what you have to say. When it's time for public comment, if you'll go to one of the two microphones on either side of the room and give your name and address for the record, then we'll hear what you have to say, and we listen very carefully. Our first item of business is adoption of the minutes from the June 24 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our first item under public hearings is Claude's Corner. If you're here to comment on Claude's Corner, please do so now. Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Next item, Montesano Court, a re-subdivision of Lot 9 and 10, Montesano Court, and a part of Laura's View, a minor. That has been withdrawn. If you came here to comment tonight, we can hear that comment now. Okay, we have no comments. We're going to hold that one open until next month, at which time it may come back before this committee. If it does, you're welcome to come back. You won't receive another notice, so I would advise you, if you're here regarding any item that gets withdrawn, I would advise you to call the city planning department and check on the agenda prior to the meeting on withdrawn items to see if it's going to come up again. Item three, Nature's Trail Phase 1. Is there anyone here to comment on Nature's Trail Phase 1? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item four, Old Cobblestone Subdivision, Phase 4. Is there anyone here to comment on Old Cobblestone Phase 4? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item five, Quigley Map, combined lots 7 and 8, Block 233, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding the Quigley Map combination of lots 7 and 8? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Item six, Sanctuary Cove, Phase 1, a re-subdivision of the replat of Lot 5 of Sanctuary Cove and other lands. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Sanctuary Cove? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Item seven, Southgate Subdivision, Phase 2. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Southgate Subdivision? Hearing no comment, public hearing's closed. Chelsea Industrial Park 3, re-subdivision of Lot 1, a minor. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Chelsea Industrial Park? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. And I'd like to pause here before we go to the next item. I realize that I did not introduce the people at this panel, so I will start with Ms. Scrimshaw at the end.
Kelly Scrimshaw, Mayor Battle's office.
I'm Les Tillery, Fuquay and Partners Architects.
Jennifer Nelson, InfraSpire.
Steve Strickland.
Sharon Tyson, community volunteer.
Vince Dickens, Army Contracts.
Janet Watson, retired builder and developer.
Gary Whitley, Huntsville Utilities.
Peggy Richard, Realtor.
Kyle Collins, Colliers International.
Kimberly Battle, AMR Deck.
Jeffrey Rice, Lieutenant Huntsville Police Department.
Jim McGuffey, Huntsville Planning.
And we have other city employees here, as well as Jim McGuffey, to make sure that we know what's going on and to keep it straight in the event that we have any legal questions. Our next item is location, character, and extent. Would you give us the information on item A, Todd Towers? No, that's not you. Okay. Lisa, maybe I'm out of order here for this.
Not it.
Not it. Not it. Nobody said. Okay, well, let's just see if we got any public comment, then. Is there anyone here to comment on Todd Towers Courtyard Fence? Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Okay, Maple Hill Cemetery Edition, location and character. Is there anyone here to comment on Maple Hill Cemetery Edition? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Could you just explain what this is about from Maple Hill? Is it new property or some old property, or what we already acquired from?
Yeah, is there someone here that has that information, the Maple Hill information? Could you just tell us a little about it? I think it's property that's already there, isn't it?
Mike Donnelly with Land Design Solutions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Mike Donnelly with Land Design Solutions. The property that is outlined in yellow on the screen is existing property within Maple Hill Cemetery. The upper part of the yellow line is Kingsbury Drive, and the addition is all that area from Kingsbury coming south back into the existing cemetery. It's approximately 2,000 additional grave sites that are added into the cemetery.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Reed, did you have any further questions? Did that answer your question? Thank you very much. Item C, is there anyone else to speak on Maple Hill Cemetery Edition? Hearing no further comment, the public hearing is closed. Item C, the Hospital Medical Mall Parking Lot Renovations. Is there anyone here to speak regarding Hospital Medical Mall Parking Lot Renovations? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Item D, Jimmison High School and McNair Junior High School. Yes, ma'am, would you give us your name and address, please?
Veronica Curtis, 6517 Mercator Drive. And I guess I have some concerns on the northeast side of the street where Jimmison High School is to be built. There are no sidewalks, and I want to make sure that that is on the record, and would like to know what the plans are to accommodate those. There are some on the northwest side of the street, but not on the northeast side of the street. And also, access for children that live in the Blue Haven Street section. If I'm not mistaken, there's a creek area which would then require the children that could walk to school to have to go all the way down Blue Haven, down Winchester, then down Pulaski Pike. So I think not having any kind of bridge or access for them to enter, other than the ones I just mentioned, is basically a means by which we could encourage truancy or absence, because children are not as athletic as we would like for them to be from a standpoint of wanting to use their legs to walk any extended distances to get to school. And I'd like for us to take that under consideration to make accommodations so that we would not help them with an excuse as a reason to not attend school.
Yes, ma'am. That's something that we have discussed among the committee members, too, and I think there's going, we'll have some further discussion tonight from after the public hearing, but that is something that we are keenly aware of, and I appreciate you bringing it up tonight because...
And if I could have one more comment?
Yes.
I attended the school board meeting, and the question came up at the most recent school board meeting, and I was concerned about their response. The response from the person in charge said, "We're taking care our part of that." And that concerns me, because I think as a member of the community, we should have a spirit of cooperation and not be in the mindset of my part, your part. It should certainly be, how can we make our city best useful for all of the constituencies? So I hope that this committee in Huntsville City can come to a meeting of the minds that it's our plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Is there someone else here to speak regarding Jimmison High School and McNair Junior High? Yes, Ms. Reed. I failed to get your name and address.
Oh, I hate to get my name wrong. Jackie Reed. Only question I have, what's that property zone today? Is that what you're doing tonight, changing the zoning? When you say "character," is that what that's doing, changing the zoning of it?
No, we're just looking at the architectural plans for the school and how they fit within the community, but there's no zoning change on it.
So it's already zoned?
I think it's R1A, but I'm not certain. Does anyone?
Oh, zoned what?
It's split-zoned R1A, R1B, which both permit public schools.
So it was already zoned for that? Are all schools zoned for that?
Are all public schools zoned for that?
Yeah.
They vary in zoning just throughout the history of the development of schools.
I didn't know if you had changed the zoning on it, anyway. It's a McNair Junior High School?
Yes. They're side by side.
Okay. And, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. It's my understanding, Jim, that schools can go in any residential zoning without need for rezoning.
Public schools.
Public schools. Okay. Does that answer your question, Jackie? Does that answer, they can go in any residential zoning, public schools can? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Alice Sams. I live at 6501 Eric Street, and I just wanted to say that the mayor has said on many occasions that all the schools in the Huntsville City school system are equal, and we just want to make sure that when you're considering the work to be done at Jimmison and McNair, that you take in consideration that this is a new school, students will be moving to a new location, and we want them to feel a part of something good. So I'm just asking you to do what you can to make this a comfortable transfer for these students, and make it be one of the good schools in Huntsville. We don't want, it's going in as a new name, therefore it would not be considered a failing school, and we want the character of the school, the look of the school, and the function of the school to be equal to the other schools in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak regarding Jimmison High School and McNair Junior High? Seeing no other speakers, the public hearing is closed. We will be discussing those items at length as we proceed with the rest of the meeting, so I encourage you to please stay. Item 10, petition to remove plat restriction. Item A, McMullen Cove Phase 4 has been withdrawn. Was there anyone here tonight who intended to speak regarding plat restriction removal in McMullen Cove Phase 4? That item will be left open on the agenda for future public hearing, and again, if you received a notice about it, additional notices will not go out. You just would need to check.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, we are being asked to call a special meeting on this one for the next zoning committee.
Oh, okay.
The petitioner, one of them was not available to sign the petition, so, and there's a delay.
So we need to close it?
Yeah, we would appreciate if you would be gracious enough to call a special call, Planning Commission meeting, and I think the date would be August, Mike, correct if I'm wrong, August 13, Wednesday, 7:30 before zoning committee. And so we would need six members present in order to handle this item.
Okay.
Could you repeat that for the August?
August 13, Wednesday, 7:30.
And that's a special meeting to consider this item?
At the call of the chairman, yes. We're asking that you call that meeting, if you would. There, I think, and Mike, correct you if I'm wrong, but I think there's a delay right now in the occupancy of the dwelling, and the petitioner, there was a correction to the petition, and the petitioner had originally signed it, but in revising it, he was out of pocket to do that, so...
Okay. I will, not here in the public hearing, but as we begin the next section of this, as chair, I will set that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we can have a motion on it. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Our next item is zoning, the Slaughter Road Rezoning. Now, the city's on. Ashley, looks like you're up. Item A, Slaughter Rezoning.
The proposed rezoning, which is outlined here in orange, I'm not sure how well everyone can see it on the front, but it's where the cursor's located, is approximately 6.39 acres. It's located on the east side of Slaughter Road and north of Pharaoh Road, which says Pharaoh, which runs through Research Park. The present zoning is R2A. The proposed rezoning is R2B, and the petitioner would like to request that particular zoning to accommodate town home and also office uses.
Thank you, Ashley. Is there anyone here to comment on Slaughter Rezoning? Yes, sir. Oh, I think, I don't think that was a comment. No, okay. Be careful how you raise your hand or... Hearing no comment, the public hearing's closed. Item B, zoning ordinance amendment, assisted living facilities. Lisa Letta.
Yes, this amendment to the zoning ordinance would add assisted living facilities to residents 2B District, Neighborhood Business C1 District, General Business C3 District, Highway Business C4 District, Light Industry, Heavy Industry districts. It would add the assisted living facilities to the list of uses permitted in those districts. Those districts also permit apartments. And currently, the only district that has assisted living facilities is Medical 2, and that's because it's a fairly new district. Otherwise, they've had to go in by variance, and so this would permit them by right in those districts.
Is there anyone here to comment on the zoning ordinance amendment to allow assisted living facilities in certain zonings? Hearing no comment, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Lisa. Before we proceed to our subdivision committee reports, I'd like to ask if we can get a motion to set a special meeting to consider the McMullen Cove petition to remove plat restrictions for August 13, 7:30, prior to the zoning committee meeting.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Subdivision committee, Ms. Battle, would you do the honors?
Yes, ma'am. Subdivision committee recommendations are as follows. First up, it's Claude's Corner. The committee recommends layout and preliminary approval on four lots with a waiver on the non-perpendicular lot line between lots 3 and 4. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Nature's Trail Phase 1. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 63 lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot line between lots 9 and 10. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item, Old Cobblestone Subdivision Phase 4. The committee recommends relayout approval on 336 lots and re-preliminary approval on 12 lots. Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Pebble Creek Phase 2 at River Landing. This is presented for final approval on 21 lots.
Jim, is it ready for final?
Yes, with improvements in sidewalks to be installed July 10, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fifth item, Providence Phase 8, presented for final approval on 52 lots.
Is it in order for final?
Yes, with improvements to be installed July 18, 2015, and sidewalks to be installed by June 19, 2015.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Sixth item, Quigley Map Combined Lot 7 and 8, Block 233, a minor. The committee recommends approval of the following waiver, reduce utilities and drainage easements from 10 feet to 5 feet along Fountain Road right-of-way. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seventh item, Sanctuary Cove Phase 1, re-subdivision of the replat of Lot 5 of Sanctuary Cove and other lands. The committee recommends re-preliminary approval on 50 lots. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eighth item, Southgate Subdivision Phase 2. The committee recommends relayout and preliminary approval on 54 lots with a waiver on the non-radio lot lines 99 through 101 and 103 through 105, and the following modifications, right-of-way to 40-foot and pavement to 22-foot. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ninth item, Chelseaa Industrial Park, re-subdivision of Lot 1, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot lines between lots 1 and 2. Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to location, character, and extent. This first item was removed, right?
Todd Towers.
No.
No, did we have Todd Towers? Okay. Sorry about that. First item is Todd Towers Courtyard Fence, number 817. A public hearing was held. Recommend approval. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item, Maple Hill Cemetery Edition, location, character, extent, number 18. A public hearing was held. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item, Hospital Medical Mall Parking Lot renovation, number 819. The public hearing was held. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fourth item, Jimmison High School and McNair Junior High School, number 821. Public hearing was held. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I, too, have some concerns about sidewalks not being on the northeast side of Pulaski Pike. Is anybody here from the city that can possibly give us a timeline on when sidewalks will be put in on that side of the roadway?
I think Michelle has some information on that.
I believe the architects are here. Yes.
These are the boards that were presented.
Would you just give your name for the record?
Bart Lyre, with Jefferson Systems.
Okay.
Sammy Rambo, with Jefferson Systems.
Andy Bernard, with PCU Consulting. Jared Cargill, Forsythe. These are modified forwards based on some of the concerns you had at our last meeting. One of the concerns was the onsite activity.
Yeah, Bart, let me ask you. I don't think they can hear you in the back. I'm going to ask the ladies who spoke, Ms. Curtis and Ms. Sams, would you come forward so you can hear what's being said, and anyone else who is particularly interested in this item? I want... Yes, Kim?
Is there a way to stick the microphone with the audio equipment?
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, maybe I can help.
Y'all can come on up so you can see the board and what he's indicating.
Okay. Again, some of your concerns we had from the previous meeting was onsite circulation. You have a board in front of you there that shows how the site is divided, both with vehicular, bus, and student driving. Sammy can point out on McNair where the bus drop-off would come in, and also where the parents would drop off on McNair. And then down on Jimmison, which is the south portion, also where the buses would come in for the high school portion, Jimmison, and also where both vehicular drop-off and drivers would come in on the very south drive, loop back around and return out to Pike. And the other concern you had there was the sidewalks. We had mentioned last that the sidewalks are going to be a part of our property. We will include that, and then again, you'll hear from the city in a minute on how those sidewalks extend north and south of our site. One other issue was, and you brought it up, was the bridge, the pedestrian bridge. That's actually been discussed the whole time, you know, we've been talking about this project. Communities had concern, all of us have, too. But there's a lot of logistics that go into that, and we're not ready to present that yet. It has to do with the Corps of Engineers, the floodplain, and obviously, security and stuff like that, so we're moving in that direction, but it's not ready to present at this time. Another issue that was brought up from our last meeting, and I'll just cover them all, was more information on the materials and/or character of it. We provided new boards, which is the last board there, that shows a little more quality and character of the building. That was something else that you ladies have brought up. We are matching, actually exceeding, existing schools in the system as far as character is, is a very robust and rich school. is very robust and rich school.
One other thing that I think that you discussed at the last meeting was that the school will have a safe room.
Yes, ma'am.
That will accommodate all of the students and personnel.
Yes, ma'am. McNair will have its own individual safe room, and Jimmison will have its own individual safe room. The current program for McNair is 700 students, and 1,100 for Jimmison.
One more question while I have you at the microphone. You state that you're still doing some research for floodplain with the Corps of Engineer. What's a timetable that we might have an answer on when that information may be received?
I can only speculate. Jerry May can expand that. We do have some existing Blue Line streams on this particular site, and I would say it's taken probably, what, Andy, four to six months to kind of get feedback, and still not official approval for the permit.
Yes, Jerry Cargill, again, foresight. I think the most complicating factor related to the bridge crossing is the floodway that goes through that creek, so that's a federal regulated issue there. It goes through the city for approval first, through the floodplain management department here, and then has to go on potentially to the state and to federal beyond that. So that is a lengthy process to get a final approval. There's also the issue of preliminary floodplain mapping versus current, and which one does the bridge have to span? So again, that's discussions with the floodplain management department. So it's not a, I guess the short statement is, it's not a quick answer. It's a month, you know, several months probably to get a final answer on, yes, it can be permitted. And so that's why it's difficult to present a final plan for something like that in a short period of time. I wouldn't expect it to be disallowed. It's just a matter of proving that we've met all the criteria. I think looking at the floodway there and the elevations that we can get the pedestrian bridge above that, so we're not having an impact on it. So I wouldn't expect it to be a solution that couldn't be found, but again, it would just take, and takes the time to get through the process.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be presumptuous to think that it would end up in something that saw after the children expected to attend the school? Or are we going to make sure that all of those things are prepared?
I'm going to defer to Andy.
It's a very complex issue that we've been studying for months since we've since the school system purchased the site, and we've still got two more years before we have to deliver a bridge. There's a lot more than just the floodplain. After you decide the floodplain, which decides the elevation of the bridge, that starts to drive length of bridge, security, connecting sidewalks, and great issues of getting the children into the school. And so, it's a little bit more than just a yes or no, a floodplain. We can go over the floodplain, it starts to decide what the design of the bridge is. And so, we're studying all of that, and since we don't have a complete answer, we've got two years for.
Well, it's supposed to open in the building this will be 15, 16.
16, 17.
August of 16. So we've got two full years for a bridge.
And once the bridge is designed and laid out, just again, for the record, I'm concerned about the fencing aesthetics on that backside of the property. Will they match, again, what's going to be on the front of Pulaski Pike? So that it will look, won't look like a basic backyard fence at that bridge crossing? Because it will be secured as.
That would be our intent.
School system is promised and open and restricted after hours.
Yes, that would be our intent to match a similar character to what we have along Pulaski Pike. May not be the entire length of that, you know, back portion, but certainly more of a welcoming gate to that back campus.
Could we look at the layout that shows the sidewalk and the possible location for the bridge again? And look at that in regard to the fencing question that we just had? That's a long distance between the athletic fields there, if I'm seeing it. Yeah. So how would you anticipate the sidewalk leading into the school building from the bridge area?
We're looking at that right now. Again, it is complex and a matter of flood elevation and how the grades tie in to the elevation of the athletic fields and how it relates to the wetlands that cross the site and those issues. So, we've got a few scenarios, and when civil engineering gets through the study, then we can start to map that out. But we're going to try to get the students from a proposed bridge to the building.
Because that is the only possible, well, I don't know what's the name of this other street here on this map.
That's really, that street there is the only possible location for a bridge. That street here on the south end, I don't think there's a house that meets there that I don't think we could go through.
Correct. That is one of the only separation of housing locks that would allow city streets.
Only public access.
Yeah.
I would like to request that when you go through your scenarios.
I'm sorry, Jennifer. I couldn't be out who was talking. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I'd like to request that when you go through your scenarios of site circulation and access, that you produce a diagram similar to that one for all pedestrian movement into and out of the campus, including all sidewalks on either side of Pulaski Pike, crosswalks to get to those sidewalks, the neighborhoods, if there are any other possible pedestrian connections, including the south side, you know, within, because we typically like to have shorter block sizes so that there are ways, you know, for the students to get in, and that they have dedicated walkways from the back of the pedestrian bridge to all access and egress points within the school property and gates. And if you could just produce a diagram as you go through it, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Is that that street?
Blue Haven.
Blue Haven. I don't see the stub markers there.
They're there.
Oh, they're there, okay. All right. So everybody on that street knows that it's a stub road. Okay.
Got a couple of questions. The red dotted line here, that is, at the bottom, is for drive-in, drop-off, and the blue, I guess, is for self-parking. Okay. Second question. On the bridge, and this is critical. You do not know what you have to do. Is there adequate amount of money appropriated for a bridge? Or do you know the answer to that question yet?
That's all part of the study.
Okay. So there's no money, as of right now, that's been appropriated for a bridge?
We're not going to say that either. That's all part of the study.
Okay. That's.
Yes, if there's going to be a proposed bridge, that location right now, that's part of the study. We've been working through this for months.
No, and I understand that. I think what I'm hearing, and don't let me put words in your mouth, is that you are working toward providing a bridge that is in keeping with the character of the school. And assuming you don't run into a roadblock that is the exact plan, but yet you have also said you're not real sure that you have the total amount of funding to do it, but you're not saying you don't. Okay. The last thing was the sidewalks that we were talking about. You said they were on the Pulaski side. I guess that would be the east or the west. That's the east. Okay. And I guess the city would be responsible for sidewalks on the other side. Is that correct? That wouldn't be in y'all's scope of work?
It would not be on the other side.
Right.
I'm wondering if there's sidewalks on both sides is the question I'm asking. Just on one side.
At this time, there are sidewalks on one side.
Got it. On the side. Forgive me, because I went to Auburn. The sidewalks on the side the school's on?
There are none.
No. Okay, that's the question I wanted to ask.
They will.
Right. That's what I thought I heard you say.
Right, the city's in the process of evaluating the need for sidewalks to connect with what the school system is proposing. So, we're committed to evaluating what the needs are, and then phasing in construction to meet the needs of the circulation of the students.
If the city doesn't come up with an assessment that requires additional sidewalk on that side, does this plan, or is there going to be another plan to account for a crosswalk from where the sidewalk begins on this property to the other side of the street?
That part of the design right now is the crossing from the northwestern side of Pulaski, crossing to the school at the appropriate locations.
Where's that at?
The sidewalk into the side, the bridge here on this side.
So right now, you would cross over, the sidewalk would begin, and then you would go to school?
Because on the south side of the property, there is a mobile housing development, and they would need to, they wouldn't be able to get bus service, so they would walk to school.
So, the, understanding you're going to put crosswalks, but crosswalks do not address the issue of pedestrians who will be walking to school on that side of the roadway. You have neighborhoods to the south and neighborhoods to the north where these young people will be walking from. So a crosswalk simply does not address the issue of safety for these young people to walk on the side of Pulaski Pike. So my question is, we're going to do all this study. I want a timeline. What is a timeline when these answers, the questions can be answered when the sidewalks will go in?
As far as the city? I don't have a timeline tonight, Lieutenant, but what I do have is, engineering has looked at a cost for sidewalks between Stringfield and Winchester. And based on, you know, we don't want to build a sidewalk that doesn't connect to any other sidewalks, so we're in the process of evaluating it, and we have the commitment of, you know, engineering and Mayor Battle that will phase in a construction plan to build sidewalks, you know, if the connection makes sense along this corridor.
Now, Michelle, on Stringfield, barring right-of-way acquisition, I don't know how the frontage of that property is from Stringfield up to that last street there. I don't know what that looks like. I guess that would have to be accounted for as well.
As part of evaluation, you're right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I noticed that we had a member of the C school board here, Ms. Robinson. I didn't know if she would mind approaching and if she had any kind of status that would address some of our concerns in the funding for the potential bridge.
I'm happy to make a comment, but I really can't add a lot to what has been, Andy's already said. The funding for the school has been set. There's a budget in place, and certainly, the school system is very much concerned about both security and accessibility. If money needs to be committed, then as a result of this study, and it indicates that it's necessary, we'll certainly have to look at it. But, you know, I think with the information they've provided you is certainly in keeping with what we would expect from the school system.
Jenny, may I ask, the school board funding that is in place now, it covers the estimated cost of this building and the improvements as we see them without the bridge?
It's, I believe that's my understanding. I know that when I talked with Dr. Wardinsky after the subdivision committee the other day, he said that they would look at additional funding for the sidewalks that was found, it was put into the plan, and that was done. He said they were looking at funding for the bridge, but the bridge study is, again, as was indicated, going to be dependent on what the Corps of Engineers says. I would hesitate, again, as a single board member, I can't commit the school system. But I can tell you that the safety and the security of the students is going to be the first priority, and providing students access from that neighborhood is certainly going to enhance their security. So, you know, if it's needful to fund it and the funds are available, I'm sure every effort would be made. But again, I can't speak for the superintendent or for the board.
Thank you, Jenny.
Madam Chair, to clarify, while we have many concerns about the proposed layout, our motion to approve is simply for the location, character, and extent of the facility and the building. I think we're all expressing our interest and our concerns based on community input and other things, but this body, we're only here to approve the actual aesthetics, for lack of better words, of the facility, not the actual layout. Is that correct?
I don't know. Location, character, and extent sounds like a pretty broad term to me. So, I guess we could ask Ms. Anderson for a legal interpretation of what location, character, and extent actually involves.
It involves every detailed perspective of the plan that they're now presenting. So they're presenting the location, the character of the building, which they've presented, and the extent. So that would include everything that they're showing. It does give them the opportunity, the location, character, and extent can always be brought back and changed over time. So it's not necessarily locking it in if there's a further development. But the location, character, and extent is just, is dealing with exactly what they're showing to us tonight.
The approval of this board, assuming that it would be granted tonight, will be the final approval on location, character, and extent. It won't go beyond this committee.
Correct.
And I think all of us understand the issue that, of the flood studies and the design studies and everything that, and the funding that has to be done. I think we all understand those. We also all understand that neighborhood access to this campus is going to be really critical to the children who will attend school in both schools, and we just want to be certain that we're doing everything that we can to be sure that the city school board continues to look at that from a funding standpoint, and that the designers continue to look at it from a design standpoint, engineering standpoint, and that the city continues to look at it from the standpoint of building the access sidewalks on other properties. For myself, I feel, you know, uncomfortable not knowing those things, but probably, you know, I think my next question would be, what happens with you, with your plans, and once this is approved, assuming it's approved tonight, what is your next step? Why are we looking at approval now instead of after these studies are done? Pardon? Yeah, would you?
Madam, my name's Kelly Pennington. I'm program director for TCU. Let me try and rephrase this a different way. It sounds uncommittal, and we are uncommittal at this point to a certain extent, because there are third parties involved with the decision on whether or not we can build that party, that bridge over the ditch over there that we have no control of. So we're going through the process right now of communicating with those entities and studying the possibilities. Without their endorsement and their buy-in to the bridge over the ditch, we can't commit to the bridge at this point. There are third parties that have a stake in the bridge that we have no control over, and we're communicating with them right now and getting the studies done. We understand the community's concerns and the intent, and we have the same concerns, but it would be unwise for us to commit to the bridge right now without having a commitment from those third parties.
I think there's some confusion and inconsistency, because with the development of Whitesburg, we didn't have access to connect Martin Road, but in that project, it happened. And I'm trying to understand why that same bravado is not being taken upon with this project, to say, yes, we're going to get that bridge done, or no, we can't do it. With Whitesburg, we just connected up to a street that we didn't know if we had access to or not. There was no approval for that, or it just happened.
There's no Corps of Engineers issue that I'm aware of with Whitesburg.
Kelly, maybe you could explain the process of, her question really goes to what happens next. You get LCEN approval, and then that allows you to do something else in the process of beginning to get to the construction and then ultimately, building of the school.
Well, I'll let Bart elaborate on that, but I would imagine, we will propose a design for a bridge and send it to these third parties and get their input back on what they think.
Why do you need LCEN approval today?
Site package, the site package actually is set to bid in a month.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat that? I didn't understand what you said.
The pack, go ahead. The Jimmison site package is already bid, yeah. The Jemison site package is already bid, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I may not address your question exactly what you're looking for, Les, but, you know, as you know, as an architect, we have certain deadlines in order to produce the school per the client's schedule. We do have answers that are not third-party dependent on portions of the building, and we're moving forward with that. What we'd like is for you to respond to the location, character, and extent of our plan so we can continue to move forward with that design and meet our timeline for the construction of the building. The bridge is another component of that, and just like Kelly outlined, we still do not have input from some of those parties. Once those parties have given us input, we can bring that information back. You know, it's hard to allocate funds when you don't know the extent of the bridge. So, we have a lot of questions right now that we're trying to answer. The good thing and the fortunate thing is, we do have two years to answer those questions, allocate funds, and hopefully produce the right outcome.
Madam Chair, while I commend the Commission for looking over this, LCNE with a very fine-tooth comb to ensure that we provide the best possible school and location for our community and our children, I do want to remind the Commission that regardless of our vote here, that the school board can still overturn this by a two-thirds vote of that body. So, I just would like to offer that as comment.
That's, thank you, Gary. That's a fact. And the school board comes here as a courtesy to the city and to us to present this for LCNE, and we certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate the opportunity to have input. And I think that you've heard tonight that all the members on this commission are very concerned about the bridge being built and the access of the students. With students who live closer than two miles to the school do not qualify for bus service, and that can put a huge impact on their families if they can't walk to school and if they don't have other transportation available to them. And we certainly think that these two schools should be premier schools in the city, and we want to, we can't express how much we really are concerned about seeing that rear access built. And I think Ms. Tyson has a comment.
Madam Chair, thank you. I think it behooves all of us to remember that the final product is, is that we want to be able to move our children safely, whatever it takes. And I think all of us agree that, yes, there will be a cost to this project, but the cost is minimal when you stop to think these are our greatest resources. The school board's very obviously in tune with that. They've dealt with issues like this before. The architects have also dealt with this. I would hope that we can all come to the table and that this project can move forward. This is a beautiful design. We just all need to keep in mind that we need to keep the ball moving forward, but we always need to keep in mind that our children are our greatest resources, and whatever we have to do to move them safely, that's what we need to do.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have one other comment unrelated to site and access. Could you go back to the elevation, the front view of the building perspective? Is the main entrance to the building reflected in that drawing? Right? So, you enter under that large canopy? Okay. There was some discussion in our committee meeting about a courtyard that was adjacent to cafeterias?
Yeah, that's correct. The canopy actually creates kind of the frontage to the courtyard that goes further back into the building itself, but the courtyard is shared by both McNair and Jemison, not really accessible by either.
Right, I recall the discussion was, we wanted to keep separate McNair and Jemison.
That's correct.
But yet, there was a courtyard adjacent to a cafeteria that maybe they couldn't use.
It is not accessible by the cafeteria. You know, we're required to separate the buildings, and we see the value in that. But what we're trying to do is make that space usable. We actually saw it as an opportunity for a community space. You have a large kind of amphitheater setup. We're actually designing the site work to support community meetings, et cetera, in that location. So, it's not necessarily just for the school.
But students will enter at that location?
No, no, that is only parents, adults. Students will enter on the north portion of the site or the south portion of the site, basically at the gymnasium.
That's the public entrance.
That is public only.
Who will be the decision-maker with regard to use of that public space?
Huntsville City Schools and administrator of that particular school.
The school itself, both schools' administrators will be involved in those decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand there's some logistical issues with how do you keep the two schools separate in security, and you don't want older kids mixing with younger kids. But I would encourage the district to really think through how that could be a habitable space from the cafeteria. Just, you got a really nice canopy there, you spent a lot of money on that space, and it doesn't really make sense not to be able to inhabit that space.
Any further questions?
I just finally just want to thank the architects, and I thank Ms. Jordan from the city, everyone being prepared to answer my questions today. Again, I do hope that you do go back and continue to work and just make sure that we get the bridge done. This is the city that sent man to the moon, and I'm sure that we can come together and figure out how to put a bridge across the creek. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing is closed, but I'm going to hear what you say.
I might ask one question?
Yes, you may.
Two questions. Y'all have asked some real important questions tonight, and I'm highly impressed. Why don't they build a bridge before we look at the school? Bring the school board in here before you pass this and make sure, because we built a school near a railroad track, and look what happened over there. I mean, we don't want somebody drowning in a creek that we don't know what it's gonna look like, and all we care about is a big, beautiful building. Why don't we, somebody, get that bridge going first and look it over, and then look at the design of the school? I mean, to me, that's just common sense. I don't have any smart, but I got a whole lot of common sense. But why didn't you bring it in here about the bridge? The character of the bridge has got to be a character too. So, if you have to bring Dr. Wardinsky and the school board members in here and look at all this and get commitment about the funding between he and Battle or whoever, build a bridge before you build a school. To me, that just makes common sense.
Madam Chair, maybe we could explain, I think I'm right in saying this, when we, if this gets passed tonight, LCNE, any bridge that would have to come back through LCNE, is that correct?
It would have to come back through LCNE as an addendum to this public property.
But equally, it doesn't have to come back.
But that, right.
This can be passed, and then we're fin-
Once we pass this tonight, we're through with LCNE on this particular property. On the other hand, if we turn it down, we can be overruled.
Well, I'm concerned a little bit because the bridge is not included in this package that we've been presented. We've talked about it, but it's not included in the plans that we've been presenting. Claudia, maybe you could clarify?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
The question is, if we approve LCNE tonight on the package that's been presented, and they decide at some later time to add this bridge that we've been talking about, would that bridge then have to come back through LCNE for approval?
To the extent the character and location and extent of that bridge is not included as a part of this package, any aspect of that would have to come back. Now, to the extent, and I haven't seen the plan sets, if there's something in the plan sets, you're approving the plan sets that they permitted, presented its location, character, and extent for. So, if there's something in terms of the character of the bridge or the extent of the bridge, and, you know, obviously, the location, they've showed you, they've shown you a tentative location, they haven't shown you an absolute location, whatever you approve tonight is what they get approval for. If there's no location, character, and extent where the bridge is a part of this package and they elect not to put it in, then they're not obligated to because it has not been a part of what you've approved.
Understand that. Are we fair in saying there's no bridge plans in this package that we're presenting?
So, we would, I think I understand that we would get an opportunity to look at the bridge and pass a judgment on that, but I think to answer Ms. Reed's question, if I'm hearing correctly, to meet the deadline schedule for opening, there are certain things that need to be done on the site preparation and site for this school now that you cannot do until you have location, character, and extent approval. Is that right, Martin? Okay. So, that's why they've come to us without the bridge, which they can't get, they can't get approved yet because they have to go through the flood engineering and the Corps of Engineers to get that, which is, I think, more or less the same reason that we lost another item on the agenda tonight because it's just, you know, they're not local, sometimes you have to work a little harder to get them.
Well, I thought I was through talking. It sounds like we're trying to put the cart before the horse. Now, we have a motion on the floor already to approve or disapprove.
We don't, we don't have a motion.
We do not.
There is a motion in the second.
Okay, would you repeat that, would you read the motion back to us, Ken?
The motion was for item number four, Jemison High School and McNair Junior High School. The motion was to approve, and there was a second.
Okay, okay, and there was a second. Okay. Okay, so you're right. My memories were fresh now, and we are in the discussion mode. Jeff, back to you. That was your question.
Adding to his question, even though you don't have the approvals to build the bridge, why was it infeasible to include the renderings or that it would be a part of the design in this approval? And then if there was an issue later on with actually getting it built, that way the location, character, and extent has the bridge in there, but if you didn't get the approvals in time, then you'd just get that done when you have the time. Why wasn't it just a part of the?
We're not finalized on the extent of the bridge at this time. I mean, flood elevation could dictate a much different length of the bridge or direction that it causes. So, that's still definitely part of the study. So, it would be very preliminary and may not be accurate to what gets built. So, that's why it's still in flux.
But we've had people come back to us with changes. I think there's just some concern that part of the rationale for moving the school to this location was to allow for more students to walk to it, and we're inhibiting such a large neighborhood from being able to walk directly to the school.
The school system routinely transports kids within less than a two-mile radius.
Has that provision already been made for this particular school?
Those traffic studies are being done as well by transportation. Again, they have two years until the school is delivered, and so those transportation trials are already being considered. And so, there's provisions made for students that the school system wants attendance, they want success in the school, and so they don't follow the state guidelines every time as far as the minimum distance that a student is allowed to walk. They routinely transport students at a much closer distance to the school. So, that's being considered for this neighborhood as well, along while we study the bridge.
Kelly, let me ask it maybe more simply. What is the harm in including the bridge even if you have to make a change as part of your layout now, even if you have to change it later on? I mean, people come back all the time with changes, do they not? I mean, things do change, but why is that a major issue?
Ms. Battle, I don't know what the mechanism of the board would be to handle this, but we don't have a problem. Once we have jumped through the hoops, for lack of a better word, with the other entities involved, and we get a decent bridge design completed, whether that's 60% or where we feel confident that we have the approval and we are moving forward, and we do think we can move forward with it, but we don't have a problem coming back before the board with the bridge design for LCNE approval, if that helps anything in any way.
I'm just trying to understand why it couldn't be included in it. LCNE is not, this isn't the final version. There's always some changes sometimes, and-
I think it goes back to what Kelly said before. If it's on the plan and we get an approval saying that we're going to provide it, and then we don't get the permitting required to put that bridge in, then we're in violation of our group, and we can't, and then we can't complete the site.
I think it just demonstrates more good faith if it's included and then something goes wrong versus-
Well, we do have, we have an indicated area on the plan that we have in front of us.
Since possible bridge.
Right.
But I am confident that with public input where this fully lies with the school board, that the school board would be remiss not to honor the public's request in this bridge, to make it happen. I'm not sure what else we can do at this point without them having a modified package to present to us at this time.
Can I speak to character and extent, and our civil engineer can elaborate on this a little bit further? Like Andy said, the span that this bridge has to get across wherever we have to start the abutments could dramatically change the character of the bridge. I mean, whether it's wider, larger trusses, we don't know what the bridge looks like at this point. Until we have some idea of where the bridge starts and where the bridge ends and who's going to require coverings and what the different requirements of the different entities are, we really don't know what the bridge looks like. We understand that everybody has a desire for a bridge, but we don't know the character and the extent of the actual bridge yet, if that makes any sense.
You know, I think we have talked about this a lot, and unless someone has a question that we haven't discussed before, I think that it's probably time to-
I've just got one other question. I'm assuming that that is block, and there's also some brick in there? Stone? Okay, stone, and then brick, and is that wood trusses on the front? Okay. That does have something to do with character, right? Okay. Appreciate it. I don't care about the bridge right now. Just making sure, and you always do.
I think it's a very attractive design.
It is.
Okay, Ken, I want everybody to feel comfortable voting, but we have talked about this a lot, and if we can, I'd like to go ahead and vote. It's last chance to say anything. All in favor of location, character, and extent as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, okay, the motion carries with opposition, and I would say that we are going to rely on the architects and the school board to do everything within its power to get that bridge for this school. Thank you for your time, and thank you, people who attended, for public hearing for your time and input. Okay, back to the, are we done with zoning? Zoning, okay. All right, no, yes, yes, zoning. Okay, item four, zoning, Ms. Tyson.
First item under zoning is the Soddy rezoning. A public hearing was held this evening.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second item on the agenda is the zoning ordinance amendment, assisted living facilities.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Third item on the agenda is the Soddy rezoning. The committee recommends that the planning commission set a public hearing for August 26th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item five, invocation and extension of bonds, Jim McGuffey. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's the end of our meeting, and we thank everyone who attended and everyone who participated.